Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. It's 9:01 a.m. My name is Tom Entzer, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mihia, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioner Emily Claus, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and we have the task of reviewing this afternoon's Board Meeting Agenda. That meeting will start at 2:00 p.m., per usual. So if we turn to that agenda, which has a nice new format. We will call the meeting to order. We'll have a Pledge of Allegiance. Are we designating who has to rotation of starting that? Look that to the clerk?
Yeah, I see we'd go in order of district.
Start with number one. Commissioner Mihia on the hook, okay. My land acknowledgement, approval of agenda, public comment, county manager's update, standing items, any questions, anything to add there, county manager?
Uh, nothing to update at this time.
Questions from the Board on those items? Consent item three, uh, sorry, 4A is interlocal agreement with Pierce County Auditor's Office regarding a February 2025 special election. We have Diana with us. Good morning. Happy New Year. Come on up to the table.
Morning, Happy New Year. Uh, Diana Benson, Chief Deputy Auditor. This one should be pretty easy. We have the ballot processing center that is being remodeled right now. Thank you. Um, and so we have an interlocal agreement with Pierce County for the Yelm School District election. This is a really important election. We are going to run several components of this election, but be in partnership with Pierce County for the Yelm District. This is, uh, the only thing that would have been on our special election ballot, but Pierce County does have another district on the ballot, so we'll save them money. Save the district money, and we are going to still have boxes open. We're still gonna have a voter pamphlet, um, insert, and we are going to pick up ballots and deliver them to Pierce County to process there, and our voting center will be open. So, this is their third attempt to pass this levy, so we're gonna do everything we can to partner with them. Uh, I met with the district with Tilly, the elections manager, and we met with Pierce County, so we feel like we have a plan to get our ballot processing center remodeled, be able to serve the Yelm School District voters, and work in partnership with Pierce County. Any questions?
So, this is interesting to me. So the, what, so ballots will be carried there, and then, like, we have our sorting machine, and it's basically, we're gonna use their machines?
Yes, we both use votwa, the state, uh, system, and, um, they will be essentially running the election, because we share that district with Pierce County. There are some Pierce County voters and some Thurston County voters.
And their machines are all able to, to handle that, even though it's a different set of, interesting.
I met with the auditor yesterday, and she was telling me about this, and she said that Pierce County has done it with Thurston County in previous elections where they've had issues with their ballot processing center, and they've contracted with us. So, it's, we're, this is the first time I think we're going that way, though. We're switching it up, so.
So, um, if we had a April election, will, I mean, will we have to do the same thing, essentially? I mean, how long, what's our timeline on being able to do it here?
So, the April election would potentially be the same. We do have a contingency plan. If Pierce County did not enter into this agreement with us, we, we're going to use alternate sites out at voter services to run such a small election, but fortunately, I think this is a win-win for the district and our county and the voters ultimately.
August election? I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the timeline is on our project. Do you?
Well, this will help with that, because we had a phased plan, and now they have access to the entire facility. So hopefully that will speed up the process. Um, this is just one component to that. Um, we hope to be finished up by summer.
Cool. Any other questions? Thank you, Diana. Okay, 4B, Washington State Department of Health Consolidated Contract.
Good morning, Happy New Year. Dr. Jen Freihight here with the Director of Public Health and Social Services. This is a request to approve the new, uh, Washington Department of Health 2025 to 2027 Consolidated Contract. And for Commissioner Grant, sometimes we refer to that as the ConCon. Um, you'll hear that term. So, uh, this is a current, uh, the current consolidated contract expired 12/31/24, so this is a new one from 1/1/25 through December 31st, 2027. Um, and it just reestablishes the terms and conditions for the statement of work, which is in Exhibit A, and the funding and billing, which is in Exhibit B, in accordance with the current state regulations. Many amendments will come throughout the years as they amend things, but this is a new one, so it's not called the amendment of the ConCon.
The new ConCon.
The new ConCon, yeah.
We have 25 amendments to that.
Correct.
Great. Starts the year off with the new ConCon. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is Request for Proposals for Public Health and Social Services, and Tom Webster is behind me.
Hi, Tom.
Good morning. Morning, Commissioners. Tom Webster with the Office of Housing and Home Prevention. So here, this item is to, um, request us to issue a request for proposals for annual funding for, um, our office, as well as kind of the Veterans Emergency Housing Program. So this is an annual request. We come every year. Um, this is a big funding cycle for us. So, um, within this, we actually have four separate requests for proposals. We're issuing under one kind of consolidated process, um, for our affordable housing capital projects. So this includes both federal and local funding for affordable housing capital projects. Our homeless services, um, funding, so this is money that is both state and local dollars. Our Community Development Block Grant Funding, which is a federal source. Um, our CDBG funds this year will be spent in South County jurisdictions. And then the Veterans Emergency Shelter Program, um, has $75,000 for, um, emergency shelter beds for, for veterans.
Sorry to interrupt, but, um, one of the items that has developed, uh, just for the holidays, it was at our shared legislative meeting, um, that the county has with its other partners, uh, was news from our delegation that the right-of-way funding that normally comes through Commerce is in suspect right now. Um, and I know that you reached out to staff, uh, and I appreciate that from Commerce. They've given you a different indication, but, um, what I will say as we go forward, because we, we are gonna get a meeting on calendar, absent the holidays, we probably have already met. But we're gonna wanna sit down with the, um, housing team to look at if we don't get funding, rather than suppose we wheel or wait till we find out for sure we won't, because the delegation was fairly conclusive. Uh, and I look to, um, Commissioner that attended that meeting, and I know that the Commissioners have done some outreach, fairly conclusive that uh, it is an uphill, um, chance, even if there's a chance, but more likely than not, it's not gonna happen. So what we're gonna wanna do is sit down and look at what does, if that funding goes away, what are the service impacts that that creates? And how do we come back to the Board with recommendations and, and conversations about utilizing, uh, existing funding? So, I didn't flag this item to be removed from the agenda, because I want to end the, put things in place, but we're gonna meet probably in the next week or so, with the Director, uh, Dr. Jen Freihight, as well, so that we can start to have that conversation and come back and do a work session with the Board. And I think the Board has some things they're gonna be discussing as well. Commissioner Mihia?
Thank you. I, I'm wondering what's the timeline on this? Is this something that has to go out on a specific timeline?
Yeah, so we've actually, um, moved up traditionally. We issued this RFP in, in mid to late February with applications due in March. Because our funding starts July 1st, we're trying to then go through the Regional Housing Council to get approval and then draw draft those contracts. This year, we've actually moved up the process a month to ensure that we can have all these decisions made and the contracts drafted, um, so before, um, so we can bring to the, those to you in June, um, for your approval. So, there is, um, a little bit of time pressure. I would say there's a little bit of flexibility there. Um, but in order to have time for us to kind of make the final awards, draft those contracts, to be ready by July 1st, and to bring those to you in June for approval, it does take time, especially, we're anticipating, you know, 60 to 70 applications is what we typically receive. Our advisory boards, the regional, the homeless services advisory board, and the affordable housing advisory board review and score those applications, make their recommendations to the Regional Housing Council, and then those recommendations come from the Regional Housing Council, um, to you. So it, it is a process that does take a little bit of time. Um, so our hope was to issue the RFPs on January 17th, applications due in February, to give March and end up April for those advisory boards and the Regional Housing Council to review those and make their recommendations.
We were to push this back a meeting to give us time to meet, because I know the Commissioners probably plan to discuss something today. Could we adjust the timeline without significant impact?
Sure, we can, we can work with that.
Okay, and it's just really because of that change of information that we received, gosh, I think it was
Two weeks, three weeks ago, maybe.
Two weeks ago. Um, and we're not wanting to put you in a jam, but I think it's just options for the Board, and I, sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, no, uh, it's fine. I'm okay with that recommendation. I was, um, yeah.
Can, can somebody remind me that we had, at some point, an allocation of three years of operational funding? Is this pulling that back? Or have we hit, I, I lose track of times sometimes, have we hit the end of the three years?
We're hitting the wall. Yeah, I, I don't think, we're in a jam. I think, I'm worried that we're in a jam, and the way it was explained to us is like, this right-of-way funding came in, and we created, you know, various programs to address the emergency, but the operational funds to fund those are like, gone. And they're not gonna reappear, so if we're, you know, so we need to potentially hit pause and have a conversation about how we're using the home fund dollars, because there, there's no, you know, they just basically said to us, hey, there's no magical pot of money to fund these, you know, these, these transitional housing things that you guys propped up, and we hold the contracts on those, and we're gonna be left holding the bag, and if there's, we don't have any money for them, the state doesn't have any money for them. Yeah, people are gonna be put on the streets, so.
And I think I, I need a, a meeting, so, in between meetings, to work with Tom and Jen to figure out what do we need to split out, and to narrow down what those dollars are, uh, so that we can come back, and probably next meeting, most of the, a lot of the, um, contracts will move forward. We would recommend them to move forward for Board consideration, but any dollars that are discretionable, based on, I think the conversation we'll have, and during the Commissioners' items, that I know, um, at least Commissioner Mihia wants to bring some things up, may help to inform a discussion, even direction to staff as to what we do next. So if we could, my recommendation would be for Board's consideration that we pull this item for next agenda. When we bring it back, we'll figure out what can be pulled. Is discretionary for the Boards?
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I'm sure you'll do that, but just, I'm, like, I don't have a good sense of, like, the, the magnitude of the, of the, you know, like, this is how much we need to sustain, and this is how much comes in, and this is what's discretionary, and what would be the full impact across, to start shifting monies, one way or the other?
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to work with.
Okay, sounds good. So, well, thanks for giving us a hand to that.
So would it be possible for, uh, I would, I mean, obviously, uh, I don't have a sense of any of those things, and so I haven't seen any numbers on that, so it would be I could get some sort of report that shows the different funding and the different types of funding that are, that's coming in.
Yeah, we would bring that back as a work session.
Okay.
Because I think where the Commissioners are responding to a very clear message from the delegation that you should, you should all be concerned, which was expressed by all the cities, the mayors, and the city managers, and again, there's gonna be some more discussion later, but we'll definitely round up the details. And to give staff, um, uh, just cover, they haven't heard any of this, because they're coming back from the holidays and, and this agenda, so in the abundance of caution, we'll hold this item, bring back what we can for next, uh, meeting, and in the meantime, have staff talk about the context and the scope, so you have, um, understanding of the decision that needs to be made.
We're always appreciative of getting funding, but it was, you know, we could see the writing on the wall from the very beginning. The state, the, the state wanted to clear the camps along their rights of way, along freeways and stuff. And I think a lot of that was political and, you know, public, and so there was this flush of money to, to, to stand up all these things, but we were already thinking, like, how are we gonna keep these operational? And there was three years of funding allocated. You know, we thought showing great success and working really hard at it might, you know, help, help inspire continuing funding, but now the state's in a budget crunch, and they don't have to allocate more, so we're, we're, we're where we are.
I, yeah, I, human nature is human nature, and we've got, you know, we've got a, a memory of about six months, and as soon as those people were, the, as soon as the houseless individuals were no longer on the right-of-way, the, you know, people forget. And, and then they stop giving money, and they think, well, problem solved, but problem's not solved. They, they went from under a bridge to into a, an
Converted hotel.
Yeah, converted hotel, and then it's no longer the state's problem, it's our problem, so. You know, I don't, I'm not saying it was, there was anything nefarious, that's just the way that human, humans work and remember and behave, and.
And I, I will add that, um, while we've had the right-of-way contract, we've had weekly to bi-weekly meetings with Department of Commerce. The Department of Commerce told us that they were going to include this in the budget. Um, and so it was a surprise to me when I looked at the Governor's Budget, uh, over, uh, the fall, both, uh, Governor Sles and Governor Ferguson's, uh, proposed budgets, and that it did not include this. Um, and so I know, um, when I let the county manager know, and he touched base with the housing staff, that, um, you reached out, and, you know, they told you that, you know, they were going to, uh, it was a mistake, and, you know, they were working on fixing it. Um, I haven't seen any changes, um, to the state, so, uh, but Department of Commerce has been telling us that, um, you know, they, they are going to include this funding, um, on it, but I think there just has to be, just because it is not included so far, that, uh, we just need to make some, some adjustments, and until it is, uh, and if it's not, then we have to come up with a different proposal.
Yeah, I'll just re, I was actually in that meeting this morning with the Department of Commerce, and they reiterated, um, that they believe the $45 million will be included in, in the Governor's Budget. It was funded the past couple of years at $75 million, so the $45 million is a reduction. That's a statewide, um, number, um, so it would still be a reduction. They've put in the request for the $45 million. Obviously, that still needs to be agreed upon, but, um, we were told by Commerce this morning that the, the request for $45 million would be included in the Governor's Budget.
So what we can do is come up with a scenario, knowing that it's not gonna be funded the full amount, you can say, here's what it looks like if there's this size of hole, or here's what it looks like if it's not funded at all, and come back and provide the data and the information, so that you have a context of what we're trying to do here.
And I'll also just add, sorry.
If it was 30 million less from that to cross the, all the programs that were funded, what is, do you have Back of the Napkin know what that means to us?
Our Back of the Napkin is, um, we've been receiving approximately 9 million per year, and that is between the county and City of Olympia. So City of Olympia also receives some funding under the right-of-way to support some of the tiny
Out of that nine.
Franz Anderson, out of that nine. Um, what we've been told is if the 45 gets approved, we would receive around 5.5 million.
So a $3.5 million hole in best-case scenario?
And again, we'll provide a lot of information, so that you can have the context, especially for Commissioners who are getting up to speed on this item. We'll bring this back for a work session.
And, and I, I do want to mention, I'm, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, I said on the State Advisory Council for Homelessness, which is, the State Advisory Council that provides right-of-way funding is actually a, a line item that our budget, uh, looked at, and then, um, and so I will pay, you know, close attention. I think we have a meeting coming up next week, um, to kind of what happened, and I mean, it sounds like a normal budget, state budget mistake, um, someone just didn't get it added in, but I, I think that I, um, you know, it, there was $600 million prioritized last year, year in housing dollars, uh, and when that money gets, I mean, I know that there's, it's gonna be different this year, but that money will come out in the next three years, and, um, you know, they don't reduce that, uh, and we go through these budget processes, so I also will be really paying attention to and bringing information I can back to folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Let's go on to the next item, which is item D, PSC Facility Relocation Agreement for Marvin Road Upgrade Phase 2.
Good morning.
Good morning, Happy New Year. All right, hang on, you got me for the next three items, I think. So, um, Public Works is requesting, um, the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Public Works Director to execute a facility relocation agreement with Puget Sound Energy in the amount of $381,362. This agreement is to complete the utility relocation work required for the Marvin Road Upgrade Phase 2 Project. As most of you know, we're currently working on the Phase 1 Project, which includes construction on Marvin Road between 22nd Avenue at the south end to Union Mills at the night, uh, excuse me, Union Mills at the north end of the project limits, and, uh, some of the project improvements include Roundabout at 19th Avenue and Access Control at Union Mills. So the Marvin Road Phase 2 Project will include the construction of the Roundabout at Marvin Road and Mullen Road. This will be, um, constructed by a private developer, um, as part of their mitigation for, um, some local development in the area. Public Works purchased the right-of-way from a private property owner ahead of the project. Um, within the new right-of-way is a new, um, is a major transmission pole, and by major transmission pole, I mean big, big transmission pole, and unfortunately, to move that also requires moving several other poles as well. So what's unique about this situation is typically, when PSC has to do relocations for county projects, um, they're within our right-of-way, so they would remove those utilities at their own, at their own cost. But because all of these facilities are outside of the right-of-way, we have to pay, um, Puget Sound Energy to relocate them. And so that funding will come from transportation impact fees that have been collected from local development in the area. Um, so again, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Public Works Director to execute a facility relocation agreement with PSC in the amount of $381,362. I, I noticed a little difference, so be happy to answer any questions.
So you said it's coming from transportation impact fees. Is that the only source of funding for this, or are we needing to pull from any other sources?
That, that, it, this would be 100% covered by transportation impact fees.
Thank you.
When you said, can you repeat when you said some portion of this is gonna be done by a private?
So the full, all of the construction of the Roundabout will be done by a private developer.
What kind of oversight do we provide over that?
We will provide, our development services team will provide the inspection oversight.
Interesting. Any other questions? All right, let's go to the next item.
All right.
Call for, uh, resolution call for sealed bids for Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Southwest Bridge and Intersection Improvement Project.
All right, so Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve a resolution calling for sealed bids for the Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Bridge and Intersection Improvement Project. This project will improve both the mobility and the safety of the intersection of Little Rock Road and 113th, and will finally be replacing the bridge that's over Bloom's Ditch, which was built in the 1920s. The existing short-span bridge will be replaced with a 50-foot-long bridge. The estimated construction cost is about $2.9 million. Public Works received a little bit, um, more than 2 million in federal funding from the construction, for the construction contract through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, and then the remaining costs will come from traffic in, impact fees and the county road fund. So again, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve the reso, resolution calling for sealed bids for the Little Rock Road and 113th Avenue Bridge and Intersection Improvement Project.
Questions on that? Nope, type we're good to go. Item F is Project Prospectus and Local Agency Agreement for the Mud Bay Road Pavement Preservation Project.
All right, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the Project Prospectus and Local Agency Agreement in all subsequent amendments and supplements with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the Mud Bay Road Pavement Preservation Project. Thurston County has been awarded $3 million in federal funding from the National Highway System, Asset Management System, for the design and construction of the Mud Bay Preservation Project. This project will address all pavement conditions going down the Mud Bay Hill from Ladrona Beach Road to Delphi Road. Along with the improvements of the road surf, of the road surface, uh, Public Works will be upgrading sidewalks, sidewalk ramps, driveway ramps to meet current ADA standards. So again, Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the Project Prospectus and Local Agency Agreement with WashDOT, as well as the subsequent amendments and supplements.
Sorry, what's the timeline on that project?
So the timeline, so this would be construction next year, so we'd be working, we'd be obligating the design funding this year and coming, um, back to request permission to call for sealed bids in 2026.
Any other questions for Matt? Okay, all right. Let's go on to item G, Transfer of Retired K-9 Isa to Madison Dillon, Sheriff's Office item. I see Sheriff Sanders, good morning. You have folks in the room? Sheriff, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Transfer.
Sorry, what? This is for the canine, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so we had, uh, one of our canine handlers has resigned from law enforcement. They are moving on to a different career path, and, um, choose a canine handler, so same thing as last time, we are just seeking the authority to sell the dog for $1 to the handler.
Isa, is I say it right?
Yeah, K-9 Isa.
Isa, okay. Any questions on canine? All right, thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
No, I was like, where's the dog?
They do bring the dog sometimes. All right, item H, last consent item is Appointment to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Yeah, we just note that there's a minor item that, uh, typo that Amy will pull out of that item. The word approved, but carry on, sorry.
Um, this also covers the only Boards and Commissions item for today. Brooks has, um, uh, experience Olympia and beyond, has to hide for the seat vacated by Annette Pitts. Um, she is eligible to serve as an activities funded by LTAC seat, um, and as you know, the eligible activities and differences are, um, limited, um, for LTAC, and LTAC's first meeting this year is coming up in the next couple of weeks, so, um, this is why the appointment is on.
Have we received any other applications? Has it been posted?
It was, um, posted online on our website. It was posted online on our website.
Okay, I, I didn't know. I guess Annette, Annette wouldn't have made it vacant until like the first of the year when she resigned.
Up to December thirty-first.
Commissioners, do you want more time to think about this?
I'd, I'd like to see it posted for a couple of weeks, but, you know, that's just me.
Know that the LTAC can meet on Monday if that seat is not filled. We would need to check with.
And I have four. Let's, if we can get back to this item, let me go upstairs and grab Jenica. She'll have some more information.
Because the other seats are filled. That's the only one that's vacant.
Leave it have to be a full queue.
Okay. Yeah, if we can, I'll be actually.
Okay, we'll come back to item four H, let's go to department item five A, Central Services Contract Award for Thurston County Camera Security System Upgrades.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Strempke, Capital Project Manager with Central Services. We're requesting authorization for the interim director to enter into contract with D Palking Holdings DBA Corrections Technology Group in the amount of one million, five hundred and sixty thousand to do security cameras and upgrades at the TC, Thurston County Crescent Facility and FJC. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
This is just a contract that follows from decisions and funding that we covered in the last year.
Yes.
Okay, any questions on this? All right. Let's go to item six A, Public Health Social Services Professional Services Contract with the Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association. Season long?
I see.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners, Season Long Environmental Health Division Director, Public Health and Social Services. Today, we will be requesting the Board approve the professional service contract with the Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to execute the contract and amendments that do not exceed ten percent and further authorize the Director designated to approve payment of invoices to Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association. Contractors and vendors as set forth in the professional service contract up to the amount of the Washington State Department of Ecology grant funding of nine hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy cents. To give some context to this, this professional service contract, last year, the Board executed two grant agreements with the Washington State Department of Ecology to replace fifty-five septic connections in the Lost Lake community. This professional service contract delegates project management authority to the Lost Lake Resort Condominium Association or subcontractors to perform activities related to the replacement of these septic systems, including but not limited to overseeing public bid process, hiring and managing the septic installer, and ensuring the project complies with the terms and conditions outlined in the two water quality contracts. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this item?
Look, Mike, thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
We'll go on to item seven A, which is Public Works again, resolution for temporary closure of Little Rock Road at the crossing of Bloom's Ditch.
Hi again, Matt Elsman, Thurston County Engineer. So, Public Works is, this is a follow-up to the previous item we discussed. So, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing the county engineer to temporarily close Little Rock Road at the crossing of Bloom's Ditch for a single time period not to exceed twelve weeks between July first and October first, two thousand twenty-five. Users of Little Rock Road would be required to follow a detour. That includes One Hundred Thirteenth Avenue, Case Road, and Ninety-third Avenue. This section of Little Rock Road has an average daily traffic volume of about seven thousand vehicles per day. The total detour length is seven and a half miles and would take approximately twelve to fifteen minutes. This would be the same detour that we used when we replaced the bridge just north of here, over Salmon Creek in two thousand fourteen. So, a communication plan will be prepared to notify stakeholders such as residents, emergency responders, school districts, and we'll be, again, implementing that as soon as possible. So, again, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing the county engineer to temporarily close Little Rock Road at the crossing of Bloom's Ditch for a single time period not to exceed twelve weeks between July first and October first, two thousand twenty-five.
Questions on item seven A?
Thank you.
And item seven B, Contract Award for Gate Bellmore Trail Glacial Heritage Phase One Project.
So, Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a contract for the Gate Bellmore Trail Glacial Heritage Phase One Project. On December fifth, we received sixteen bids in response to a call for sealed bids for this project. The low responsive bid was from RL Aaliyah Company of Renton, Washington, with a bid amount of one million, eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Funding for this project will come from REIT two, as well as park impact fees. The project will pave approximately two point seven miles of trail on a decommission railroad grade. The trail will be approximately ten feet wide. A parking area with twenty-one parking stalls will also be constructed. This is the first phase of many that will extend this trail all the way from Grand Mound to Olympia. So, again, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Director of Public Works to execute a contract for the Gate Bellmore Trail Glacial Heritage Phase One Project to RL Aaliyah Company of Renton, Washington in the amount of one million, eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Is this a summer, two thousand twenty-five project, or?
So, this will start, um, in the spring.
Spring.
If not sooner.
All right, thank you. Sounds great, exciting. Feature reports will follow, and then we'll be adjourned. I'll take care of this afternoon's agenda. Sounds like clerk said we're kind of covered on boards and commissions. Anything we need to cover there?
Want to go back to H, Chair?
Yeah, let's go back to our item H, where we were looking at the. Did we decide we were moving C off of the consent calendar and pushing it to a future agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, regarding H, there is flexibility for this to go out. Staff, Jenica is checking on whether or not they'll have the ability to meet. But it's, she's not going to have it by the time this meeting's done.
I think even if it pushes it two, three weeks, it won't overturn any apple cards. Did you just, did I use that term right? Does the apple card thing work, judges? I think it works. I, I've never heard of us having a vacancy and like, we got a rush to fill or they can't meet. They have, they can't, I mean, there's only one vacancy, I can't imagine they can't meet.
I can't verify, and Jenica didn't know offhand that that was the case. I think what we would just advise that the VCB has had a seat on this, but the requirement is that it's anyone receiving these funds, so.
Funded activities represented.
Right, so you could go out and it's, and we could put something out and have other applicants for the board to consider, if that's your desire.
But you're, the point being, it's a limited pool of people.
It is a limited pool of people.
Funded activity representatives.
Yeah. So, if that's the board's direction, we can hold this item, work with the clerk and Jenica to go out and post it.
Yeah.
And do we know if, what the work they did to recruit, or, I mean, did they already go through a little bit of this process and then?
No, so, just to, and that's a good question, Commissioner Grant. The background on this is the VCB, through the former director, made a recommendation of a staff member based on this, keeping their seat.
Oh, I see.
So, that's what, at their urging, staff brought that forward for your consideration. And the county, county's not doing anything wrong or right, that approach, it's really your preference. We want to say thank you for your recommendation, knowing that this person is interested. We could still put something out, work with the clerk, and get other folks, and then we can go through the similar process that we do where we will send you applications, the clerk bets them. Then you have the opportunity to deliberate and make a decision.
And there are a lot of other funded, I mean, like, there's a pool that we can have other funded people, I mean.
Is it currently funded activities or ever been funded?
I mean, the weird part about that is traditionally, we hadn't funded any activities that the EOB does. I mean, that was, that was a mandate prior, but it, it says representative of funded activities, so it doesn't, I mean, that, that's kind of soft.
There's a broadness to it, but it's not, I wouldn't say a lot. I'd say there's a universe of folks that would fall into that category, and we can go to do recruitment and see how many we get.
Yeah.
And if the board's desires to do it for two to three weeks, then we can take that direction and implement it.
Okay.
That's fine.
It's all good.
Okay, seeing that that seems like the board consensus, work with the clerk and Jenica to get that done.
Okay, and then any other, I saw Commissioner Meehan.
Yeah, I have a question for the citizen advisory boards and commissions. So, I know that a couple of planning commission, um, seats expired at the end of December. They have one-year terms, and I'm wondering, one of them was not. And so, I'm wondering, have we received any applications for planning commissioners? And if so, can the commissioners who have those open seats, can we take a chance to review them?
Yes, absolutely. I know we've received, um, one for Commissioner Grant and one or two, a couple for Commissioner Fourner, one for Commissioner Fivener.
And I believe Commissioner Grant's seat that is open is the countywide one. Mine is district only. I'm not sure about.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yours.
Before you get a breakdown.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, all the applicants could potentially be relevant to all of us because we all have one seat that could be, that's, that's at large.
So, if we can just start getting those applications, so we can at least not, if I have to recruit for my specific one, then at least I know who's applied.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. So, no other applications pending to be addressed, so let's go on to Commissioner Items.
Can I ask a quick question about the, the rest of these on here? I mean, do we just have these out as, you know?
Every week, you're going to get a sheet like this, and it's going to show you kind of like where the status of the vacancies are, and then any applications will be attached. And we just kind of touch base every Tuesday or every, every agenda setting to say, is this one ready to go? Do we want to recruit more?
Some are really hard to fill.
Some of them are like, yeah, there's like three or four boards that are like competitive. And then, you know, it's like, I've had ones where we, we've all interviewed the people because it's pretty competitive and significant. And then there's other ones where it's like, oh, there's a, there's a warm body that wants to do this, awesome.
The noxious weed control board.
Oh, I know.
And then the districts, the weed districts are different than the commissioner districts.
Yeah.
Oh, they are?
So, that one was, that was weird, I didn't know that. And then like, the historic commission, to me, that's cool stuff. I don't know why that one's not competitive.
Well, that one has a lot of people. The historic commission is.
This is actually really excellent that we only had like the three, the four alternates.
This is a small list.
Yeah, usually there's like seven vacancies on historic commission. We've done a pretty good job of filling some.
I think we changed it, like, I remember, because there were like, some of them that were like really specific, where it was like an attorney, a real estate person, and then we were like, well, let's just broaden it up. So, that one changed and it filled up quickly, so.
Are those districts in historic commission the same as our districts?
No, uh, I think so. No, I don't think they are district.
So, districts four and five just don't exist? I wonder if that's, that's something.
Commissioner districts.
Those are, so I wonder if there are four and five.
But they're full, probably.
They may be full.
Or they weren't created yet, that's what I was. Yeah, because that's what I was, because we could look though, right?
Yeah, we'll figure that out. I mean, we'd get them in there, but, uh, the weed board is actually one to look at because they do some important, like, things by lead, by law that have to be done. And I think there's only, unlike the historic commission where I think there's fifteen or more, the weeds, I think there's only one per district, if I want to remember right. It's a smallish board. So, that's kind of a problem, right, that we only have those two vacancies on the weed board?
Oh, and I'm sorry, one of those is now filled.
Okay.
So, we're down to one.
Jenica called and.
So, we're only down to one?
District four.
Okay, good. Well, that's helpful, but yeah, that, those are important to be filled.
So, four is done.
So, it could be Commissioner Claus's district, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Grant, if you want any background on boards and commissions, Amy and I are happy to be, fill you in on what we do and how we build in. That is a, as the commissioners mentioned, it's a year-long communication that we'll be providing you.
The weird thing about the boards to understand is that every single one is different.
Right.
Based on how it's, where it comes from in the law, like, whether the seats are staggered, whether the seats are by district, whether they're, I mean, it's like, every one is its own little thing. It's not just a standardized, like, rules that apply. We have a handbook that applies to kind of all of them, just some basic ground rules. But in terms of filling, like, it, there's a lot of nuance to each one just based on how it got created. Some of them come from state law, some of them are, you know, commissioner-created, and it, it's interesting to.
Sure.
They're all figured out.
Remind me about.
And then there's ditch districts and things like that. They come from like federal law from nineteenth century.
Yeah. Yeah.
Old England.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, good there. Let's go to Commissioner Items. Commissioner Meehan?
I have three. I have three items.
Let's go with your first one.
Okay, uh, so, the first one is a Safe Play Letter of Support to Legislators. And so, Linda Zeman from Commissioner Remenser's office drafted an excellent letter. This is a request that we received over the break for support with one of their requests. And they asked that we let our delegation know that we were in support of it. And so, I think this is, they don't receive anything, um, they don't receive hard copies, so this is something that we can email over to our delegation and just let them know that we are in support of this request, if that's the will of the board.
Did, I, I skimmed this, and I'm, I'm trying to, I was trying to figure out, they say their funding got cut by like five seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Is that, what does that mean? Did some, I mean, do you know, is that like, did they actually get cut? Or did they, their fundraising was, you know, not as robust, or like, they're just?
They didn't get the grants that they needed. I, I know that there were a couple, I knew a couple of things about that one, but.
Okay.
My question is, what would be, I think we want to consider how, how to find sustainable funding, so they're not doing, having this every year.
Right. Any other comments or questions? Like, I think that they're.
So, they're asking for a budget proviso, okay.
I don't know exactly the kind of funding that they're hoping to secure, whether that, I know we always ask the question, is it, is that in competition with other funding that we're looking for, in the same source, or is this something?
It looks like, if they're asking for a budget proviso, then they, they're working with, you know, one of the state agencies to add a line item that will essentially be a sustainable, I mean, as long, you know, if it's a proviso, it would be for so many years.
I'm not aware, I mean.
So, it won't touch us.
I'm not aware of any other organization that provides the services they provide. I mean, they're kind of the key agency of the county.
Well, there are ours, I mean, there's, there's lots of other organizations around the state.
Yeah, I mean, but here.
Right, domestic, yes.
So, I guess I'd be in support of this.
Yeah.
Thumbs up, everyone?
Okay.
Okay, so we have consents on that.
So, we'll go ahead, Taylor's not here, but.
Yes, she is.
Oh, there she is, there you are. Uh, Taylor, if you can grenade and send this out to our delegation and.
Yeah, if Taylor could work, so we want signatures from all the commissioners?
Yeah, we can do signatures.
Yeah, so just work with the clerk.
Thank you, okay.
Sorry, I have one question about that.
Yeah.
Um, I think this is really good, and I'm wondering, um, there are like, I think there's another nonprofit in town that does focus on some of this work innovations. It's IHTC, I think is the acronym. And I'm just wondering, um, because we're only naming one nonprofit on the letter, should we, should we revise at all to include, or is this just for Safe Place? Because I know there's at least one other agency that's doing similar work, but not to the same extent as Safe Place. So, I just want to make sure we're not coming off as favoring one agency over another, unless that's the specific intent of this letter is to support Safe Place.
Well, it says local nonprofits like Safe Place are on the headlines.
Yeah, I saw that, but then I saw that we're only naming like a financial amount for Safe Place. So, I don't know, I just wanted to.
This is just in response to a letter that we received from Safe Place.
Okay.
This is supporting their ask.
Okay. Came in.
We don't know, we don't know the needs of any other organization, so.
Okay.
We just have to kind of stick to that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to, um, next item. Anyone? Commissioner Meehan, back to you.
Okay. The second one is in regards to right-of-way funding that we kind of covered. Okay. Uh, the second one is in regards to right-of-way funding that we kinda covered, uh, earlier this morning. Uh, so over the winter break, um, I know Commissioner Fournier was having conversations on his part with some of the legislators. I was looking at the governor's budget, um, and realized that the funding was not there. And so, um, during that time, I think there was a mayor's meeting and Commissioner Fournier, uh, brought this issue up, um, and during that meeting, they decided that they were going to have a, uh, meeting with the governor, kinda similar to what we did four years ago when we went in front of Governor Inslee and requested that, and that was the chair and the mayors at the time, uh, went to request funding for, for right-of-way. And so this is, uh, they're planning to kind of go do that again, kind of lay out their case, which I think is great. Um, I've written a draft letter to the mayors and so my concern, um, and is that, um, while I appreciate that they are reaching out, um, I really think that at this time, we really need to start thinking of a Plan B. Um, just, I, I don't wanna be in the situation where, um, staff have to rush to come up with a Plan B later on. I think we have time right now, uh, to really, uh, see what we're going to do. Um, and in that sense, I would like to do a temporary pause on all county and local jurisdictional spending for any new housing and homelessness initiatives. Um, the reason I'm asking for the county to write this letter to the mayors and for this to be presented to the mayors is because, uh, while the county is the one responsible and we're going to be the one holding the bag, I think that, um, a letter from the mayors as well as the chair of the ca- uh, the county, um, to the RHC will signify that we are still all supportive of moving along together in this project and that, uh, if we are going to, uh, do a temporary pause on all kind of spending, it just doesn't fall kind of like on the back of the county, but as well as all the jurisdictions. And it would also show the RHC that their mayors are in support of this. And my request from the mayors really is to, um, is to write a letter to the RHC, kind of outline this thoughts, and I've written kind of something, uh, for the mayors to possibly write to the regional housing council. Um, and it's, you know, developing a contingency, uh, plan, provide a comprehensive assess- assessment, and pause future funding initiatives are the main items in that. Um, I have reached out to, uh, different, um, I've reached out to the new, um, executive director for Department of Commerce, or I think he takes over on the fifteenth, and kind of, uh, talked with him about his priorities, let him know kind of where we're at on this. Um, but just with the budget shortfalls, uh, it just, for me, it's, I am very concerned and really think that we need to start really doing, uh, proceeding and kind of the worst-case scenario, which is not receiving those operational funds. And that's the big part, is receiving those operational funds moving forward.
So have you, what, there was a mayor's meeting, I mean, have you talked to Mayor Ryder?
There was a, yeah, there was a North County mayor's meeting and, and we, we spoke about this.
Is everybody?
Uh, I mean, I don't know.
Interested in this?
I, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but we, we, we said that this is a concern and everybody acknowledged that this is a real concern that we need to, like, not ignore. And kinda the sentiment was that it would be negligent to proceed as if there wasn't an issue.
Commissioner, I may, the takeaway from that meeting, and I wasn't there at the entire thing, I had to leave, um, at a certain point, but was for the mayors to, I think, uh, City of the Lacey was gonna take the lead.
Yep.
To write a letter to the new governor requesting a meeting with the mayors and the chair of the board to have a discussion about how important this funding is and the impact. I believe what Commissioner Mihia's, uh, suggestion from a strategy standpoint is to take that one step further and to, for us to engage with the mayors to see if, not only to talk to the mayor, but also to signal to the regional housing council that we may need to start to take some preventative measures, uh, in light of either reduced funding or funding going away altogether. And I think what, uh, caused everyone concerned is the mayors and city managers were at the shared legislative, uh, meeting, was the certainty by which the delegation said, this funding is not coming back. Not because it was mentioned that it was not included, we couldn't find it, it's like, it's not gonna be there. So I think absent that message, we would probably not have elevated so high as to an alert.
It, it was, the money's not there. There is no magic pot of money. It's your responsibility. Those three things were very, very clear.
Yeah. So this request to pause funding on, so I mean, wha- what does that mean in practicality? I mean, are there, I mean, obviously there's continuing things that need to be funded and then we've got the new RFP, which Tom laid out the timeline, that's like coming in June or whatever. So are there things that, like, are there practical things you think that would be halted if we were, if the RHC were to say, oh, you're right, let's not fund it? What does that mean?
Well, that's kind of why I said only new items, right? So we do RFP every year and things that are ongoing are in a certain pot and then we do that new, kind of, for new projects and then they go through kind of the RFP process. That's what I'm asking to pause right now, just as, to give staff the time to evaluate kind of what funds are available, what we have. Um, I'm not, you know, I don't want to damage like any ongoing funding or raise alert that we're, you know, going to be stopping that piece. But any new projects that are requests, I, that's kind of where I'm at and, um, you know, we fund new requests every year. And so I, that's kind of where I'm like, can we just take a pause?
So getting ahead of this process that may come in the spring.
Yeah, because. Because we don't know, like, where we're going to be at, what the whole scope of the operational needs are.
Right.
Um, and, uh, you know, at the end of the day, we are the ones in contract with, uh, with Lehigh and with a lot of these organizations and, um, I, I just really want us to take this proactive approach. I have signed this letter just, uh, for me to the mayors, uh, if no one else is comfortable in signing with us. I, uh, just would ask that the chair and vice chair present this letter to the mayors, um, and kind of just let them know my thoughts. If anyone else wants to sign on, that's, that's fine. Um, but I just really want my concerns to be shared with, with the mayors, uh, at the next meeting if possible.
So it's a two-step, you or us to the mayors and then all of us to the RHC?
Mm-hmm.
Asking the mayors to sign to then do a letter.
Yeah. Everybody on the side there. I think this is prudent. I, I think we need to reassess what we have and what our obligations are so that we all understand, you know, I guess, well, what, what the money is that's outgoing that we're, we're obligated to spend and then, uh, I, I wanna, what, so the, the process, the RHC makes recommendations for home fund dollars to be spent to the commission and then we ultimately sign off on what the final decision is for those funding?
Up or down vote?
Okay. So, you know, i- it is important that we send this out to the RHC saying, hey, our worries are, and we want these priorities acknowledged because if they're sending things to us that are, are not funding the obligations that we've already got on the table, it might be a down vote for the recommendations, essentially.
Yeah, I think that's right. Any other thoughts?
Well, um, I mean, I have thoughts. I think, I mean, I think that, you know, being cautious is, is good. Um, I would definitely agree with, uh, you know, I, I really like this, the, 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 you know, develop, the steps here around developing a contingency plan, providing a comprehensive assessment, um, and then taking a pause. And I think for me, it's, um, I'm much more interested in the taking a pause and the comprehensive assessment, simply to look at what are all the different current, I mean, to really, I think that there is some real value at this point in time and, uh, a lot of different people doing different things, uh, mayors and City of Olympia doing. There are things, um, that we take a good look at what's out there currently so that we can explore if there was a kind of funding cut, um, uh, you know, how, how we can work together, um, to, to kind of make things work for our, our county. But I will say this, that, um, I am, um, I think, I think that I would like, you know, us also to be thinking about it, you know, looking at exploring alternate, I mean, just because right-of-way funding is, is maybe, maybe going to be cut a bit, um, and there is some like policy reason behind that being cut down a little bit. I'm aware of that, um, because there are a lot of people who didn't like that, that pot of funding. But there are lots of other pieces and pots of funding that are coming down and being trickled and we're being released even in the wake of the cuts through the Department of Commerce. Um, and I wanna make sure that we're also exploring, you know, potential upcoming funding, um, you know, opportunities that could put, potentially backfill. Um, and so I think that that's the, you know, where I'm a little more, I don't think that we're gonna lose a bunch of money in housing though, um, just based on kind of those higher level discussions, um, I'm involved in. Uh, I think there will be quite a bit of funding. I just don't know that we have the ability to get that right at this moment. Um, and so I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreement. I think I, you can put my name on this with you guys. Um, I mean, that's, that's completely fine. Uh, I am all about taking a pause. I think the most important thing for me really is about comprehensive assessment, really stepping back and going, what do we have, what do we have now? Wha- what do we need to shore up? And what do we need to try to figure out to fill the gaps going forward? And I've not seen that in any way, shape or form from any of these partners yet, so I'd like to see that too.
So do you wanna re-draft this as we instead of I and have us all sign it?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Is there any concern about that?
That's great.
So it looks like we're on board with this.
Creative, um, Commissioner Mihia's team, uh, has the redrafting, works with the clerk and then we'll work to get signatures from everybody.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you for the proactive approach you're taking. How early you were able to review the governor's budget and put something in action, I think is really great.
Yeah, this is great. Okay, definitely needed.
Chair, I just wanted to, uh, moving on from that item, just to mention, uh, quickly, you commented on the new agenda format. I just wanted to thank, uh, the clerk and the commissioner's office team for the new format. Um, I didn't realize that this new format is saving on average about over four hours a week in work. And then any change, you know, the different typo changes, because of the system that they were doing the agenda in, anywhere from ten to fifteen minutes to make the change because the formatting drops words, drops letters, you know, there's so many typos sometimes and as we go, they're looking at it going, we thought we caught everything. Um, so doing it this way, and thank you for the offices that provided feedback on different things, um, because you allowing them to do this allows, gives them more time to just make sure everything's, uh, um, more efficient. And then the last thing I'll say is, uh, we would like to start to use electronic signatures for items the board clearly approves in action and items. Right now, the clerk spends quite a bit of time rounding up for physical signatures and I understand that in the past, there's some, there's some commissioners that only wanted to sign physically, but it takes them quite a bit of, sometimes hours, uh, to get out the text messages, emails, flag people down. Sometimes you're all here, sometimes you're not. Uh, and when the, the board approves items, you'd only do it when the board has clearly taken the action to approve. Uh, that's effectively the, the direction that the clerk to apply the electronic signature. So unless there's any major concerns about that, uh, we wanna continue to implement efficiencies to keep things moving forward.
Is there some sort of, like, summary or something you could send us after our signature is applied to something so we have it for our records?
Okay.
Say, per your action, it was approved on this date.
That'd be great, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, manager. Um, another Commissioner item, Commissioner Mihia?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, um, I have, uh, just, uh, two heads up more than anything on the BHASO side of things. Um, so, um, there is, uh, there was a request, uh, from the BHASO, uh, to write a letter of, uh, support, uh, for Emerald City Behavioral Health. They're looking to, um, open up, uh, center and, um, the concern again arises from there is no, uh, budget or funding for our operational needs and that comes from.
ITA.
Of course, yeah, the ITA. And so, um, you know, uh, they are still in dialogue with the BHASO, uh, but just wanted to kind of highlight that they have put in, um, for a grant and, um, a- and that, uh, you know, I did want to highlight that, um, we, we might have, you know, just continuing conversations on the lack of ITA funding, whenever these request.
Who's actually applying for a grant?
Uh, Emerald City Behavioral Health, and they're a private entity.
So they're coming.
Yeah.
This is about whether or not they can get funding for the stuff that we need.
Yeah.
To do them.
Um, and then, um, so just let, let you know that I did write that letter and I included it. Um, and then, um, just another kind of heads up, um, that, uh, the BHASO is having, uh, funding pulled from, uh, the HCA. Um, and the concerns from that is that as, you know, invoices, uh, are delayed throughout the year, um, and they just did it at a point in time, like, just, that's when they did the cutoff. And as invoices are coming in, then, um, the BHASO is, is kind of like in, in a pickle. They are working with the HCA, um, and, uh, trying to resolve this, but, uh, just wanted to let you know that there was, uh, some information sent over to, um, legislators about, uh, their concerns and wanted to let the board know, just as a heads up, just in case, um, you are asked about this, um, in any setting.
How much we talking?
I can give some context to this too. Uh, I met with Joe Avellus and, uh, with Tara on last Thursday. Um, and, uh, this used to be my, this HCA, the, the HCA fiscal staff used to be my staff. I'm very, very familiar with reserves and, and the different, um, what, well, what they're doing in this, in this, um, exercise is what I'm gonna call this, is an exercise. Um, but, uh, I wouldn't worry too much. Um, you know, essentially, these are, uh, funds that kinda sit back off to the side and, um, are, you know, every single VHO across the state has them. Um, and generally, uh, someone will yell for these and then it won't go through. Um, and so, um, and even if it did, I mean, I think what we'll, we'll really, really need to be hyper vigilant with, um, with Joe and with Tara as, uh, the Senate's staff member tries to do this, um, that we will just be really, um, need to be vocal and write letters as they needed if, if it, if it comes up. But, um, I'm, I'm pretty confident this probably won't happen. Um, and then, um, and then I wanted to mention, uh, so Carolina, on the, with this, this letter, I think this is great. Um, I just think that maybe we should add a couple other agencies, um, because, um, to ensure sufficient funding and staffing, um, for this specific group, the Emerald Behavioral Health, um, for ITA, ITA funding, there is, there's funding, um, when it comes to operational dollars, ITA funding would come from healthcare authority or from DSHS. And, um, and from Department of Commerce would come bricks and mortar, building money, um, so capital. And so that's why I'm like, I think, I, I definitely like this idea and I would, I wonder about True Blood funding. I think we, um, some of the True Blood funding that came along with the forensic navigators, uh, should have been allocated or could be allocated towards this specific, um, treatment. Um, but, but I just wondered if we should just add another, just maybe draft a couple letters to all the agencies so they know.
Yeah, and so, um, the reason it was, I just did this myself and submitted this was because it was a time crunch of.
Oh, you already submitted?
Yeah. I already submitted this. Uh, the application that they were submitting was due that Friday and so we did just a quick turnaround of.
Okay.
Highlighting our concerns. Um, happy to expand and write to others, but just as that application was due, uh, Joe just requested that this be just pretty quick.
Okay, sounds good. Yep.
Did you get to celebrate Christmas, Commissioner Mihia? Sounds like you're busy.
I know.
Did your kids get any presents?
They did.
Okay, uh, any other Commissioner items this morning?
Great.
Am I the only one that spoke up? Uh, yeah, I, I, I don't wanna start the year off talking about an issue that I wanna leave in. in 2024, but I, I want to make sure that the county manager understands the intent of the resolution that was passed by the, the commission. And so if we need to discuss that a little more, I know that we restored Commissioner Klaus to all her outside boards and commissions, but there's still discussion about an executive assistant or being a supervisor. And so I wanted to put that on the table and make sure that the county manager had, understood the intent, you know, and I, I know what my, my understanding of the resolution was when I read section two, request accountability measures. The board respectfully but firmly requests Commissioner Emily Klaus to assess what accountability for, to her breaches of trust and ethical governance looks like and take any and all appropriate actions to hold herself accountable to enable Thurston County to move forward with leadership that restores public trust and confidence. To me, that, that looks like we ensure that some type of training is taking place regarding supervising and that we've set up some kind of guardrails with hiring practices to make sure that, you know, we're not hiring friends. So like that, kind of like when I read that, that's what I have in mind is to make sure specific guardrails are in place so that we're not gonna be in a similar situation and not, I'm not, I'm not being, trying to be presumptive or accusatory or anything like that. I just, when something's happened, you put things in place to make sure they don't happen again and don't just assume they won't happen again. So like that's, I, I would, I, I would be uncomfortable just saying, hey, it's 2025, you can supervise again. So like, I, I want to, I want, I'm curious what the rest of the board's thoughts are or direction would be for the county manager.
I have some thoughts on that. So as far as guardrails being put in place, I don't know that that's necessary. I'm taking measures to work on some of the things that were recommended in the resolution. So for example, our risk pool is putting on several trainings, which I've signed up for all but one. So supervisor bootcamp is one of them, which is happening today and tomorrow during our hours that we're in meetings. So I wasn't able to sign up for that one. But see, I did sign up for harassment, discrimination and retaliation prevention in January, minimizing workplace gossip in February, developing emotional intelligence in February and managing challenging conversations in February. The last training I didn't sign up for was providing A-plus customer service in the public sector. I didn't feel like that was as relevant to the leadership items as the others, but I wanted to just put that out there for the, for county leadership and commissioners, anyone who might be interested. Those trainings look really valuable and through the Washington County's risk pool and I'm happy to send those out. I appreciate Commissioner Grant for sending those my way and bringing that to my attention, but that was one thing I've set up. And then additionally, I sent out an email to the county manager and board clerk and HR director regarding possible steps in, in hiring a new executive assistant. And one of those steps is to set up a hiring panel. And so I was, before I reach out to potential panel members, I was waiting to hear back from the county manager, which I haven't heard back yet on, is this something that's vacant officially? Is it something that I can go ahead and move forward with interviews? But I would be ensuring that those interviews are conducted by a full hiring panel.
When was that email sent out?
Uh, yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll get back to you soon. I think, yeah, I, that was something that I was going to strongly suggest in terms of rebuilding internal trust was to use a, you know, a, a, you know, which we're not required to do in general, but I think in this case would make a lot of sense. So I'm glad to hear you saying that you're going to do that. Commissioner Meehan?
Thank you. I have requested because for me, it's where the payment is going to come from, from the board. And so I would like to know exactly where, where we're at in terms of our budget and that additional expenditure that we had to take to settle a matter. And I just, for me, it's, I'm looking at it from a financial point. And so I would like to take a pause and get that information from HR and the county manager before we proceed with, or with, before Commissioner Klaus proceeds with hiring an EA. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, my, my comments are to Commissioner Fornier's standpoint. I would need board direction on how you would like to proceed. In normal situation, we would just facilitate the hiring of an EA for a commissioner and not have very much involvement unless requested. So if the board is going to give some guidance on that, then it would need to be board direction to me, whatever that guidance is. I've not taken a look at the risk pool training. I think it's pretty generic as, as it comes through from our trainer here. It's just resources that are out there. And so I'm working with the HR team and our trainer on how to make that specific to county and how do we integrate our policies. There's a lot of work as this situation has uncovered that we're going to be doing in 2025 on developing our own internal controls. But I would say that that training is better than nothing as we move forward. So to your comment, Commissioner, about pausing, that would need to be board direction so that I'm operating consistently and not outside of bounds.
Can I ask, I mean, the supervisor bootcamp thing, I mean, to me, that kind of sounds like directly on point. So, I mean, in terms of what concerns have been raised. So is that something that can be watched online later or even if it's not fully participated in, can it be accessed as a resource? Because that sounds on point to me.
Yeah, I was going to mention that too, that I know, I think it was a two day training. Is that correct? And that it's in person?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So I did vet, look at these.
Oh, wait, sorry, this is actually virtual.
Virtual, okay. But it is a live trainer?
Yes.
Yeah. And so I, I did look at these kind of in depth and thought there was some value in these trainings. I would agree that there are a lot of trainings out there that are of no value, that you click and point and go right through. And, and I would also kind of agree there with Ty that I wonder if there's a way for you to register for the supervisor bootcamp because it does seem like it had, I looked at the agenda, it had some great topics in there and I don't know if we can excuse you from these meetings. We're like, I don't know how that works, but, but I think there's a real value in that specific training. I don't know if it was today and tomorrow. Was it today?
No, it was actually, now that I'm looking at it, tomorrow and Thursday. But registration closed yesterday, so I would have to reach out to them and see if I could get an exception to register for that.
And I thought there were about 10 or 11 slots left two days ago when I looked at that, so, so I would encourage that.
I don't think we're covering anything controversial. Go ahead.
No, I think we should pause though. I will just finish with mine really quick that I, I do, I also would like to understand the funding piece. And I think, you know, I've already reached out about that to really understanding where the funding comes from for covering our claims and, and from the risk pool and, and how that money is budgeted each year and how much we've already spent. I, I mean, I'm very interested in understanding all of the pieces around the details before we move forward with the decisions. And so, you know, I also will just say that I am, there are some things that have come up from you when thinking through this around. I'm, I'm really interested in knowing, you know, what will happen after court on Thursday, just because I would hate to hire an EA and then have them take a full-time position and then something to go wrong with the recall or something like that and then that person doesn't have a job in three months. Do you know, I mean, that's something that has gone through my, my head and so we're just thinking about that as well. So just kind of to tread lightly on what next steps are happening with, with your external court case. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, I, I appreciate Commissioner Klaus saying that she's, she's looked into putting, you know, some kind of path forward and I, I think that's, that's absolutely appropriate. I just also like to give space for HR and the county manager to kind of put their mark on what that would look like or what, maybe what risk pool would like to see happen or risk management would like to see happen to, to, you know, come to a fully restorative place. And, you know, and I, again, I don't know what these classes are. I don't know if they're just like a click and watch a YouTube video or if they're legitimate classes, but something, you know, something that is, is believable and legitimate. So like I would, you know, I, and it's not that I don't think that you're an intelligent, capable person, it's just like, give somebody, you know, give an objective outside person an opportunity to stamp their approval on it and then it makes it much more legitimate a process than, than you. You know, this is, and this is just purely friendly suggestion, you know, like it's, there's more weight to saying, yes, Mr. County Manager and HR, what do you think the right supervisor class is than Commissioner Klaus saying, this is what I'm taking and this is what worked. And I'm not saying that's what you said either, but, you know, just be, try to be mindful of that. So I, I, you know, I would ask to give space to HR and the county manager to say, hey, you know, take these steps, understand these things, prove, you know, your understanding through this course or certificate, what have you, and then and only then would, you know, I say that the county has done its, its job to make sure that we don't end up in a similar situation. And if we do end up in a similar situation, we can clearly say, hey, you should have, you should have known better or we can say it louder than we did this last time, you know? So that, that's my concern. And I also would like to understand the budget implications of the settlement money. You know, where did that come from? What does that look like? Does that affect our general fund in a way where, you know, we can't afford to pay for an EA? So I, I'd like to understand that. So I, you know, I, I think the, the discussion is, is appropriate to have right now, but I think that like having an answer would be, would be premature, in my opinion.
So I'm looking for direction. I'm hearing.
So there's three.
Hearing that you all want to wait.
Pause until we get the financial information from HR, risk pool and you, of course.
But I, I would like to offer in the interim, some of my EA's time, if, if that would be okay with you. You know, in the interim, you know, I, with my, right now, especially on Fridays, my son has chemotherapy and I will not be working on Fridays for a period of time. And, and would like, you know, if you would like the help of Ashley as she's getting, you know, I don't know if anyone else can offer a little bit of time, but, you know, just to help you, I know that you're feeling overwhelmed and I really feel like, you know, for you to be able to get your responsibilities and everything all cut up if you need some, some effort and some help from one of our EAs. I'll offer my.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate that and I agree with taking a pause to assess the fiscal impact on, you know, where are we with the budget? Where is the money coming from? I understand that piece. As far as any sort of like oversight on trainings that should be taken, I, I don't know where the board is at with that. I, I think we saw three on, on the fiscal side, but as far as oversight on what trainings need to be taken, I don't know that I necessarily agree with that, but I, I am open to suggestions. Like for these ones that come from the risk pool, they were forwarded my way by Commissioner Grant, which I again, really appreciate. And I am open to other board members sending me trainings that they think are, you know, look useful, but I think as far as, you know, in the interest of putting this in 2024 and in moving forward, I think that it would be a good idea to kind of really, really take into consideration what that means as far as like having HR and the county manager direct what steps to take. I would appreciate the opportunity to make my own decisions on what trainings to take, knowing that I will, you know, consider heavily things that are forwarded my way. Any suggestions that are made, I'm open to that. I'm really interested in more training opportunities. If the county manager and the HR director forward me opportunities that are, you know, relevant to the situation, I'd be happy to look at those and consider those as well as they impact my schedule. And the board excusing me sometimes from work sessions to be able to take those trainings is another thing that I would appreciate and I'll always bring forward during commissioner items, trainings that I'm interested in so the board is aware and I'm open to one-on-one conversations as well as any, if anyone wants to discuss with me what they think would be good accountability measures.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with what you're saying. I mean, I think that, I guess I partially agree with Commissioner Fornier that I'd like the county manager and HR to provide some resources, kind of go up to Commissioner Klaus. She, you know, she's got a, if, if something's really relevant and she doesn't want to do it, then that's going to be, you know, that's going to be her to answer for, but, so I would like that effort to be made to try to get the right type of resources directed to Commissioner Klaus and then it'll be her responsibility to, to take the accountability measures that we've asked for in the resolution. And then as far as the financial, I, yeah, I want, I'd like to see all that. I'd like to see it pretty quickly though, because I'm kind of skeptical it's going to really bear on whether, on the EA process, but maybe it will. So, you know, it doesn't sound like it's going to be difficult to just know. We know how we pay for, for legal settlements. I mean, that should be information we could have in, in an hour frankly, but if we take this up next week or whatever, in some reasonable amount of time, just so we can chart the path forward from there. I'm, I'm, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at as far as direction is set.
I was going to say too, I think it would be pretty easy to get that information of, you know, what, what the expenditure and I'd actually really like to see the, and I already mentioned this, that, you know, at least a couple year trend of the, the number of lawsuits we pay out and, and then understanding how that fund is budgeted year by year.
Is it overstrained or, you know, just kind of like, yeah, a little bit of context?
I've already had, based on commissioners reaching out, I've already asked the team to start working.
Yeah.
Get that information, so I'm hoping that we can have it quickly too.
Okay, perfect. Anything else to address this morning in this? All right, thank you. Appreciate the discussion. Any other commissioner items? All right, back at 2:00 PM for our first board meeting of the year. Is there anybody?